As seven oh one, so I will call this meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board for the September twenty fourth. Meeting to order. First order of business is approval of the meeting minutes from September tenth, twenty twenty four. Did all the members of the planning board have the ability to review and or have any comments?
Yes, and no comments.
Okay, in that case, uh, does it would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second? So motion by Theo seconded by Kevin to approve the meeting minutes from the September tenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
Theo Noel?
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion passes four to nothing. Second order of business is associated with the Affordable Homes Act or AHA. And accessory dwelling units. Uh, so Sam, if if uh, works, I'd like to pivot this over to you.
Sure, um, so I wanted to give everyone an update. There is the potential to um. To sponsor an updated legislation. I'm sorry for the background noise. Um, to sponsor updated legislation reflecting the parameters that are laid out by. The Affordable Homes Act for ADUs specifically, um, because that is the substantive zoning change that needs to happen.
Can we maybe back up and give context what the the Affordable Homes Act in includes as it relates to?
That's what I was just getting to, yeah. Um, as I realized, I didn't give that. So the Affordable Homes Act. Um, permits ADUs by right, and it has some very basic parameters on what is permitted and what is not permitted. Under that, but it's it's very superficial right now. Um, there's a size. That is regulated um. Of, excuse me, nine hundred square feet or um fifty percent. Of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. And then um it allows attached and detached, which are also substantive changes that um our updated code will need to reflect. And uh, it cannot require owner occupation of the primary structure or of the ADU. That own, the owner does not, property owner does not need to live on site. Um, so we need to update those parameters. Under our code. Hold on, excuse me. Sorry, um, so it, those are things that we need to to talk about as well as. Um, if we're going to be considering garage apartments uh as part of this, or. Um, if it would just be like a detached separate structure, there's a lot of little little components. Um, and technically, the. Affordable Homes Act um. Has an enactment date of February twenty twenty five. So either we enact our specific townwide code. Or we will end up reverting back to just whatever um. It, the Affordable Homes Act will effectively trump any of our existing local code. Um, so parts that can be enforced, like, I don't know, let's say setback, if our setbacks are, I don't know, ten feet. That part could still be enforced, but the component of somebody living in the unit. Um, that is a relative, which is under our current regulation, would not be enforceable. Um, owner occupation is not enforceable. Uh, a yearly renewal, I don't think is enforceable because that um. Isn't really by right, it's to confirm uh compliance with the relative clause. So those are all things that need to be updated. Um, but if, like I said, if we don't update them, we're not really out of compliance. We just. Are. Leaving ourselves open to following the Affordable Homes Act and it's kind of generic state right now. Because again, we haven't gotten any um guidelines from EO HLC, which is. The Executive Office of Housing and Living.
Livable.
Livable communities, thanks. Like, I got lost in it for a second, sorry. Um. And then also, we are not capable of enforcing no short term rentals on them. So, one other thing that we are permitted under the Affordable Homes Act to regulate is whether or not they can be utilized as short term rental. Um, the goal is to provide year round housing, so it would behoove us to be able to update that. Um, having something together by fall town meeting is very unrealistic at this point, um, because you can't have enough town. Or um, you can't have enough public hearings or anything in order to meet the deadline for having it on the warrant. However, um. You know, we would likely be looking at spring, and that gives enough time for us to, if you do want to sponsor it, to be able to get everything together. Have the required public meetings or public hearings um that you want to have and figure out what parameters. And I can make a little like checklist of things to go down. Um, I I had one together that I had sent to Susan, but it's effectively just the kind of the talking points, because we need to think about setbacks. You need to think about um, because it has to be attached and detached, but do you want to have garage apartments? I don't know if there's um any preferences, there's requirements for parking, um can only be one per unit. Um, we also might want to prohibit explicitly.
Sam, do you mind if I pause you for a second? I I.
Yeah, sure.
All this is great content. Um, I I fear we may be falling into a rabbit hole, so I just want to zoom.
Sure.
View, so. The Affordable Homes Act is a uh law that was passed by the state. That requires that all municipalities in the state have accessory dwelling units by right. There's a enforcement deadline of February twenty twenty five. And there, I think what I'm hearing is that there are some explicit impacts of noncompliance with the law. As it relates to. Enforcibility of accessory dwelling unit bylaws that we have on the books. As well as short term rentals restrictions that we may have on the books. So the question that's being presented to this board is. Probably not for the fall town meeting because of where we are in the schedule. But for the spring town meeting, is this board interesting in picking this up? And starting to craft a bylaw that could be compliant with the state regulations in order to prevent some of these. Other impacts of noncompliance. Is that fundamentally what we're we're talking about?
Yes, and also, just as a side note, currently, it has been deemed by ZBA that we do not have an explicit prohibition. On. Short term rentals in our current zoning code. Um, so the way that it's set up currently is that. Come February, somebody can build one and use it as a short term rental. And the other one thing to caveat, and part of why it's really important that we work on moving this forward is that. Once the units are registered, they will be eligible for inclusion on the um subsidized housing list, which can help us with. A whole host of things.
Okay, so uh, I want to recognize Theo who's raised his hand.
Yeah, I think um, thank you, th- this is really helpful. Um, it's good to get the sort of the overview and. I'm I'm appreciative of getting into the weeds of this. Um, and Sam, you started to answer my question. Um. So like, to what degree are uh ADUs that come online before we. Uh, formally uh amend our zoning court code to include all these requirements. Uh, what effect are people grant, are those units grandfathered in? Would be the first question. Are they grandfathered in only until we adopt the zoning or?
Effectively, um, they could, there could be some, so it's effective, it's like a donut hole. Um, we have existing regulations right now that are noncompliant with uh the Affordable Homes Act. So, once February hits, until we have code, there's going to be, you know, the donut hole of of. Somebody can come in and as long as they're meeting the other components of our zoning code, like our setback requirements. Um, uh, if they're building an accessory structure, uh, it would need to meet setbacks or an addition. And it would need to meet any other height or whatever existing code, right, you know, refers back to. Let's see, if it meets all of those, they can be permitted. Um, because there's nothing, a- and again, they can be rented out in short term as a short term rental. Um. So it's not impacting the, at this point, because it's not registered. It would not necessarily be included on the um SHI, which is again, part of the. That's one of the things I talked about pulling in as a process for registering them so that we can formally include them. Um, but they would be permitted to be built as long as they're meeting the other components of the zoning code until. And there's a lot more, um, it would be fairly. Restrict, uh, very minimal restrictions until we get the. Um, accessory, I think they're called accessory apartments right now, updated in our current code for for Wakefield.
So people don't get uh a blanket grand grandfathering and then, so then they they can be short term rental forever.
Well, the, yeah, the idea, I I don't know about the short term rental forever component, I would have to double check on legal, like. How exactly that works, um, because it's it's permitted, the use is. A accessory apartment or accessory dwelling unit, not, and this little in the weeds, and not a short term rental. Um, but, and one other way that you can kind of help bring those online and get them registered is by. Creating some sort of system, again, that's something that can be included in in the code, um, so that we can have an actual hard. Kind of number of what ADUs we have, because I I actually already have people reaching out. Trying to build ADUs um under the Affordable Homes Act. I have somebody, I think there's three of them. That I have reached out just in the last week or so. So like actual, they have plans.
So without getting diving into the weeds of the of the act, and all, this is all great context. I do want to make sure we as a board, uh, you know, I. My initial indicator lean would be that this would be something that might make sense for us to. To take a, take at least a hard look at. So I I want to recognize Kevin, who's raised his hand as well.
So I I wonder, given the timing of spring town meeting and there's the the work that the bylaw review committee is doing. On the zoning bylaws already. If it makes sense to give recommendations to that committee for the updates, we would like to see as it pertains to. This specific update, um, just because there's going to be so many parts that are sort of integrated as far as tables and such. To make sure that it's all consistent.
Kevin, is the bylaw review committee anticipating going forth to the spring town meeting, or are they anticipating fall?
So the last I or we were shooting for spring, uh, our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for October twenty first. So we'll have a better idea then of if that's achievable. If it's not spring, then I think it makes sense for this to just be a a solo motion from us sponsored by planning board. But if the two could go in unison, it might make sense to do it that way.
I'm happy to to reach out, um. Because yeah, I think the. The. If there's already something coming forward with that, it it could be potentially a little bit easier. Um, if the board wants, I'm happy to reach out. Just let me know.
The the other advantage to that would be we could utilize attorney Bobrowski to sort of see how other towns are handling this as well.
I I think that's a, that's a really good suggestion. Do do other members of the board have have a reaction to that approach?
Yeah, I I think this is something we should take up. Um, one of my questions though was, how is it that this was enacted but basically doesn't give towns? Any opportu- or much opportunity to get anything established? Is that on purpose or or do you know how that happened?
Um, I don't, I can postulate that there just wasn't um as much. Awareness on how the town, some of the towns have to go through a town meeting process. Um, and so it just wasn't, the timeline, it's it's a hundred and eighty days, like their, which is their standard. Um, and I I just don't know how much um. Thought was put into it similar to with MBTA communities, everybody knew that'd be a much bigger process. Um, there's been a lot of conversations about how it kind of creates a little bit of a problem um. With trying to, for the municipalities that have to go to town meeting, for trying to get all of that enacted. Um, in the tight timeline, at a minimum, the the recommendation is to update the um. Definition of an ADU so that it's compliant with the Affordable Homes Act definition. Uh, or reflective of that um as soon as possible, including whether or not you want to take that to fall town meeting, that's something, because there's no discussion on it. It's literally just take the existing definition that the Affordable Homes Act has and amend yours. Um. And then that makes it compliant, it also talks about the size in there. Um, it's what a lot of municipalities in, at least that I've. Kind of been in touch with so far that are kind of in our like north shore, north suburban area. Um, that's what a number of them are doing. But as for the the timeline, um, we, you know, we don't have control over it, so we're doing the best we can to try to figure out how to. How to deal with that donut hole and try to stay at least um on the forefront. I think some may end up. Municipalities may end up having to have or opt, choose to have a special. Um, meeting, but there's, there's so, because they're done by right, there's not as much um. It's there, you can't really have a public hearing, you can't have a lot of processes, like where people have the idea that they're going to have. You know, the ability to stop it, um, if it's meeting the intent of the code, then it needs to be permitted. Um, again, referring back to this whole by right component, so. I think there are some of them that are trying to just get what they can to move forward. Um, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, it it helps, it just seems like um. You know. The. The legislature being aware of of the type of meetings that happen in in the state. In the schedule, it just seems like, it just seems odd that a February enactment date was was chosen and not. Uh, you know, the fiscal year or something like that, something that would give towns an opportunity to at least. Not restrict it, but have some some more say over it.
Right.
I, again, I'm I'm. I'm in favor of the board picking this up, I don't think anyone else is going to do it, so um. I I see some. Potential issues if 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 this is left unchecked, and I I think we need to have some. Some safeguards and and guardrails on uh what we want to see in town.
Okay, um, do any other members of the board uh have any other reactions besides, I'm hearing a suggestion to potentially. Have the travel with the bylaw review, and I'm hearing uh an argument for potentially picking this up as a standalone.
I I don't know if. If tying this into the bylaw review is 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 going to be expeditious, because what we've seen so far, it it seems to drag on. And I think it's more important that we get something enacted and if. If members of the bylaw review want to comment on it, that's fine, but. Having this prepared and then sending it to the bylaw review committee and waiting for them to bring it up. Could take. Longer than spring town meeting is is what I'm worried about.
Uh, Theo, do you, do you have any? Uh, reaction to the the back and forth so far?
No, I I um, I think Matt raises a really good point. Um. The, so, um, right, us taking it up uh. Would be at a minimum prep to uh make a formal recommendation to the bylaw committee. I um. So, um, I I think it's maybe, I think Matt's right, I think it's a little, maybe a little more judicious to take it up on our own and then. Um, the bylaw committee can catch up.
And I I didn't want bylaw to own it as the ones bringing it forth. I think this makes sense. And if the two timelines work, then we could make sure that the language fits together based on how tables are being proposed by BRC.
Gotcha, understood. So if that's the case, I I think, and I, in agreement. With the with other members of the board have expressed their opinion that this seems like an appropriate. A topic for the bylaw or for the planning board to to pick up. So with that being said, is there anyone who's willing to raise their hand and and be, I'll I'll call it a champion to work with Sam on. Developing the text. And before before anyone volunteers, maybe if Sam looked like you, you had something you wanted to to say.
I'm happy to let you you discuss that. Um, I wanted to know if you want to do what some other towns are doing and kind of separate. The two components um to get uh compliance with. The Affordable Homes Act by updating the definition at, to be compliant with the Affordable Homes Act for fall town meeting. Um, or if you want to wait and try to just do it all at the same time.
I I'll defer to other members of the board, but my initial thought is that. I think given that the three A is likely to be in front of the town meeting at fall. I would have a strong preference to keep any other zoning related items away from that meeting based on the. Um, the back and forth that's occurred to date with three A, and I'd rather just do everything all at once. For this item for, just to be as clean and as clear as possible to the public. But if other members of the board feel differently, I I I can definitely respect that.
I I could. See a lot of uh. Entanglement on on these couple issues, if if three A and this came up, where people just wouldn't be able to. To separate them and throw them all into, let's, you know, let's not do anything, which. I I I think it's it's going to be a bigger issue in town if if nothing is. Is handled and everything's thrown into the same pot and then thrown out. So, I would say yes, let's just take this up in spring and let the three A. Uh, move forward in fall, if if that's going to happen.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, so in that case, um, with that being said. Does anyone want to raise their hand and to be the the champion of this effort to uh start working with Sam and any other stakeholders that we need to? To start talking to uh regarding language, I I I'm guessing it probably makes sense to give. Someone from the ZBA a pre read of of this and the bylaw review committee, to your point, Kevin. Um, and unless others disagree, if you feel like the ZBA is the one who's been touching this the most in terms of the practical day to day use. So I think it probably makes sense to. Start by coming up with a, I'll call minimum compliance. Idea, give it to the ZBA and then we can talk about if there's any other things that need to be. Considered if we want to make any other additional changes, but the very minimum, we should figure out what the minimum text is. To comply.
Sam, do you have a sense on on? How much? How much addition, how much we need to get into place by then, or is this something? A template for a lot of other towns that can, we can just modify?
Um, so there were some kind of examples of different IDA, I mean, AD. ADU regulations um from around the municipality. I mean, around the state from other municipalities. And some that they were saying you could look to, to kind of model yours after. Um, as far as I know, on this particular component. Uh, EO HLC is not going to be giving big, long guidelines like they did for MBTA communities. So we should be able to take the examples. Um, and I can really easily kind of write out a bullet point list of what to go through, it's what I had already kind of started to do. Um, so that you'll know what the different components are, what the different talking points are. Um, I've dealt with. Accessory dwelling units before through zoning overlays, um, so it's not entirely foreign to me. And I'm happy to to work on um. On really tying it, tying my knowledge together with the Affordable Homes Act and then some of the other municipalities that have. Code um that we can kind of base ours off of. I mean, there's no need to reinvent the wheel when it's already, already rolling in other communities.
Alright. Um, I would like to say right now that I could commit to it, but I need to. I need to look at my my schedule over the next couple of months, so is this something? At our next meeting, we could, you know, each of us take a look and see how much capacity we have and and at that point. Um. Assign a point person or Jim, do you need someone tonight?
I don't think we need someone tonight, and and honestly, I also would would not mind having the full board here. To, if we're going to make a decision, um, so I don't see any reason why we need to rush anything if we're talking about a spring town meeting. Especially to Sam's point, if there's potentially some templates that are. Hopefully, this is not the same lift as a three A compliance.
No, it's definitely not. Um, it should not be anywhere near the length. I've already started, like I said, to make some bullet points. Um, and talking points to whoever wants to to go over them um when we get there, and I think it's going to be pretty. Like, pretty cut and dry. Um, there's some things that are more specific to us, like I said, with the short term rentals that we really want to exclude. Um, if we want to have any regulations on curb cuts, I mean, there's there's a little, there's a few things um that came up through. As I was reading through everybody else's regulations on things that we'll want to consider. Um, but I don't, I don't anticipate this being anywhere near as complicated as three A. And now three A also has, what, four or five different um character areas, which means that they have four or five different. Variations of the code to write, um, so it's not going to be anywhere near as complicated as all of that.
So in that case, what I proposed, unless other members of the board disagree is, I think we've had a fruitful conversation. We've made a couple of decisions in terms of when we think about doing this. Like, we can punt till next meeting and then we can identify who will be the uh, the point person from the board to start working with Sam in terms of a. You know, developing it. I I can't imagine this is going to be. I hope that this is not going to be a super controversial one. At least until we get to town meeting, I'm sure that they'll be very controversial because of the estate mandate aspect of it.
Yeah, yeah, there's, uh, and again, there's only so much we can do. Um, there's only so much we can regulate, so there's a lot less. I mean, at three A, I think also had a lot more variables uh than this one does.
And and Sam, just to clarify, this is, it's not that the town potentially is gonna. Lose out on funds or anything, it basically just isn't acted, so inaction by town only. Potentially. Hurts people, it it doesn't. Whereas three A, they see enactment is. Is something that may hurt the town, so this is sort of like the flip side, so either we do something to. Protect the town, or if we don't, it happens.
It happens, yeah, whether you try to stop it or not, it's going to happen. Um, or whether you write code or not, I should say, because you can't. At least not at this point, no one sued this one. Um, so yeah, that's that's.
I think that would be a much easier sell than 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 the inverse, so, alright.
Well, I totally agree, Matt. We all know that people are going to be uh upset with the state regardless of. How, what the impacts are, so, okay. Um, anything else from anyone before I move on to item number four, the housing production plan? So, item number four, housing production plan. Uh, Sam, I think this is another one that uh I'll be looking over to to you on.
Just giving you a quick update, um, the advisory committee had their first meeting, um, the next one is scheduled mid October. And right now, um, the consultant is getting started on the housing needs assessment, which is basically just a bunch of research. Um, and then they're going to slowly start working on a survey and some interviews um to gain some. Like first person, more first person knowledge um about existing conditions in Wakefield. Uh, and that will help to inform the direction of the actual housing production plan. Um, so that's really the only updates I have for you, just wanted to give you a heads up on where that one's going.
Yeah, um, and uh, I. Attending the first meeting, I have to say, I'm pretty excited for the the plan and the the consultants working on it. Um, uh, a really, I think thoughtful approach and um, and they they really started by encouraging the. The advisory group to think about final outcomes, first of all, um, so that I think really help uh frame the context. And I I think the sort of other two points to to mention, and I have a a question really. Um, the the immediate focus is on building our support uh SHI inventory, so. What, that's a really positive, because it is really thinking strategically about how to get to and above. Um, and how to like, you know, maintain our our ten percent um at a minimum. Um. The, it's a five year plan, um, and it it really can, I think, help. The it's a five year plan, um, and it it really can, I think, help queue up. Other topics um, and uh, other other planning efforts and to help guide things, it's, you know, it's also sort of complimentary to. The master plan, um, so um. There's there's the potential, right, for a little uh overlap or uh of the housing needs assessment. Um, so this should be a lot more granular and and beneficial, um. And the I I think there there may, there may in fact be um, some more specific. Uh, images or typologies or sort of more more detail about. Uh, building housing, so you know, hopefully kind of take some of the sting off of. Future development or what what sort of opportunities might lie. Yeah, go ahead.
To to build off of what Theo is saying, um, one thing too that the group is gonna be, the consultant group is going to be looking at. As part of the housing needs assessment is to see if we need to look at deeper affordability. Um, so that can be helpful in in guiding. Just, I don't know, general development and understanding of of what the reality of the situation, I mean, everyone is assuming the answer is going to say yes. Um, but getting what those thresholds are and what the actual needs are, I think will be really helpful, um. And guiding a lot of future development throughout the area.
That's 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 that would be really helpful, um, does this have to be adopted at town meeting?
I don't think so, but I'd have to double check, I don't think so.
Yeah, um, and yeah, so the goal is to be finalized by April uh, next next year, so. Um, yeah, probably not, and that, just to to also, I think, um, it's. It's a good diverse uh advisory group, we've got a. Wakefield Housing Authority Commissioner, a Realtor, several town members, including a renter, council on aging, town council. And Commission of Disabilities and um, environmental sustainability, so a lot of, yeah, um.
And correct me, or Theo, can you, can you, and maybe Sam, I'm not sure, but I I know you were talking about. Anticipated deliverables, is, you know, I know there'll probably be some sort of report, but will that include recommend recommendations as it relates to? I'll say actionable steps that this board will need to take after it, or in terms of, you know, recommendations to amend X, Y, or Z of the zoning. You know, what what are you anticipating or, you know, and again, not a specific deliverable, the types of things you need to be aware of.
Right, so uh, I went through the previous housing production plan and it had a lot of. Goals, um, some were specific, or you know, if you wanna go through the ac- the traditional acronym of. Of goals is smart, um, some of them were smart and some of them were not, um. You know, it's it's great to have objectives or kind of the more loose goals, but uh. Having really actionable ones, I think is is one thing that can really help guide. Projects, um, and so it was one thing that was actually explicitly spelled out in the RFP is that these. The we we want an action plan of how to address this, we want steps, we don't just want. Examples um, and want it to be, you know, a little more superficial, um, we want to know. What Wakefield needs and how we can achieve this and what our goals are step by step, and the previous one did have a good amount of information. But you know, it's it's expired and um, some of them were not super. Uh, were not necessarily the most clear, um, and so the the goal is really the. Intent and the purpose of the housing production plan is to have a very explicit actionable plan. To figure out how to move forward, to not just reach our ten percent, but exceed it and work towards meeting the needs of all Wakefield residents. Um, and again, it was spelled out pretty clearly in the housing production plan, RFP. So, um, and they said they read it. And their their um, their proposal included some specifics and some previous examples. Um, and and Lynn uh, L of LDS has been. Uh, a consultant on actual projects of getting it through from start to finish, so she has a lot of really great knowledge, um. On the reality of it, not just that kind of superficial, here's planning or best planning practices. Um, they can really hone in on on what we field needs and then how to carry that out um. Through grant examples, project examples and kind of tying it all together. That's what I had talked to them about, uh, again, also reiterated in the RFP, and so. Um, they're aware that that is the plan as we do, I think everybody wants to be able to meet our ten percent, um, not just. To hit that number and deal with, be able to, you know, say note of um. To developers coming in uh, with forty Bs and find ways to be more proactive, working together on forty Bs. But um, I do think that people generally around the area um, want to meet the needs of all Wakefield residents, and so that's a big part of. Why we're undertaking the housing production plan and trying to get a long term plan, um, and also the. Uh, new housing production plan will have a step by step. Um, process on how to get it renewed. So that we won't have it lapsing again, um, and also give us kind of a a basic framework. For reaching out and collaborating on different housing. Projects that will be coming through or initiatives um, over the years, so that we can take that community action plan, essentially. Community engagement action plan and be able to put that into um, into play on future projects.
Okay, sounds great, any other comments or questions for other members of the board?
Uh, thank you, Sam, you said it really well, that was really perfect.
Okay, uh, anything else on item number four, housing production plan before I pivot to the next item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, none, the I'll pivot to item number five subdivision template. So I I had this added to the to it, um, given the 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 meeting where we are. Think this may be good timing based on where we are in the calendar and a potential subdivision that has come before the board. But uh, in going through some of the closeout documents and as we were putting together the the subdivision for the the last subdivision decision that we made. Um, I thought it was was worth a conversation with the balance of the board. If it made sense to take a look at the decisions we've issued as a board to date. And look at maybe making some sort of template and a list of I'll call typical conditions. And maybe even I've seen in my professional work, other municipalities have. The list of conditions are sorted out by when and during the process they are. Prior to uh issuance of building permit, during construction, closeout. And I wanted to start a conversation with other members of the board, if there's an interest of trying to collect some of the, I'll say. More typical boilerplate conditions that we see on projects and or a list of ones that are on an as needed basis and. Wanted to see if there was interest in in trying to develop something, um, I'm not sure if we just kinda, I'll say, copy save. Previous decisions or what's been the the MO in the in the past, uh, not having not seen some of the. Some of that process as much, um, so I wanted to open it up, you know, and I think. Matt, I would really love to to hear if you had any feedback, if you thought this is something that. If it already exists, then maybe I'm barking up the wrong tree, or if it's something that you think has has merit.
So you you're talking. Conditions. Basically. Imposed on on subdivisions once, once we pass them or?
Correct, yeah, so you know how, so looking at, for example, I believe it was the the Lovis Ave that we were looking at. To do, there's like thirty six conditions that were included in the letter that we issued as the final decision. And a number of them look, I'll I'll say. Similar that maybe on a number of projects. But also going through and looking at it and seeing how it came together for the uh, Salem one, the the order is not. You know, the. It it, I had a hard time exactly figuring out what was needed for closeout and what wasn't, cause it looked like there wasn't necessarily, um. You know, it looked like it'd be an accumulation of items, not necessarily the the layout was. You know, oh, I know that if I go to this section, I know it, here's all the closeout ones, if that makes sense.
Well, I I think you're talking two things, you're talking the conditions that we have, and those have been de- developed over the years. Uh, Paul Revis. Worked hard on on bringing a lot of those and um, some of the attorneys that have been doing them have realized that. Alright, we've done this in the past, this is what the board's gonna expect, those have been carried through. So, but then you're talking about, you're also talking about it. Basically a closeout list, so all those conditions have been approved, now how do we make sure that they are? Enforced and enacted, is that, is that what you mean and?
So, so yeah, fundamentally, I think you're right, there there are two separate things I'm talking about, I think one is. Just making sure that we have a depository of the, I'll say, the typical conditions and or the the ones that. You know, you could say are are. Going to be on almost every project and then some of them that are on an as needed basis and. I know that that's been built over a series of years and and experience, but if there's like a. You know, a central depository where all those things live. And then separately, just, I I know, it looks like there's, it looks to me as if we we kinda have the same generalized. Structure to a number of these decisions, um, and making sure that we're all in agreement that the structure we have to these decisions are consistent. Even though the the beginning portion with the the history of everything. It all looks like to me, if you're looking at a couple of these decisions, that they're they're materially similar, but I'm not sure if. If I didn't have the ability to go cut, take the one from prev- the previous decision and copy save and then at start editing it. I don't know if I could create this by. Without doing that that effort, if that makes sense, so I I think, to your point, I think there's two things, kind of creating a list of typical conditions. And then creating also just like a generic template that we that someone who's maybe drawing this up. Um, coming to it fresh could could look at and use the. To create these decisions.
Well, I I I think you see the reason why we have members that. On on the planning board for for five years is because um, it. It takes you a few of these subdivisions before you see. Uh, how people get around certain things and then they're written in, I know there's. Uh, there's quite a few in there that I've insisted upon, uh, like. You know, making sure that the streets are clean at the end of the day and there's no parking and things like that, so. And a lot of that has just come down from experience, it's like, okay, we got burnt on the last one. We're gonna make sure that that doesn't happen again, and some of those have come and gone depending on basically. Members and 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 how forcefully they. They want to keep certain. Conditions up. You know, I guess is is the best thing to say. And then others are just. With with. Making sure that there's a. You know, the proper documentation is enumerated in there, it's it's something that Paul Revis was a stickler for too, so. I I, and usually the best thing to do is is go over the last couple of decisions and you can pull those usually off the registry and and. And get them from there. I know Paul always had his list that when he came, when he came, he would be ready to go with it, so. And and I think some of the attorneys that are bringing these understand that and they they go back and and see what. Has been requested and and pushed forward in the last and they they automatically follow us through. So, you know, I don't know if that helps answer the question, but we may wanna, as we go. I don't know if we can have a standard one, because again, each subdivision is a little bit different too, the one we just passed on. On on the Haunt Street was a a simple two lot subdivision with one billable lot, which is completely different than. Say Lovis or Prospect Street or Gates of Green with something like that. The size really depends on on the conditions too. I don't know if that answers your question or or helps at all.
You know, I think it's it's helpful, you know, I think. Maybe maybe what I'm hearing is maybe it's it's not worth the effort of trying to create a template, cause it's not really a templateable. Effort, because it's, I say boutique to each individual project.
I I I would say a- as soon as you came up with a template, it it's gonna be altered. So, um, it'd be nice to have something, but. Again, i- if people don't feel strongly about certain. Conditions on there. They they sometimes just disappear and and it's it's not an issue and and until it becomes an issue again, it. No one's gonna say anything, so. And a lot of that also depends on who's doing the work and you can sometimes get a sense as you're going through the process. That certain people are gonna need to have more guardrails and others. You can sort of understand they're gonna do it the right way and and. We may not have to condition everything because they've already put it, they've already committed to doing it, so. I I would. I would say it may be an effort that. While noble, it it may not. You know, hold up over time and it it may not be worth the effort.
Okay, um, well, thank you, thank you, I I said. Something that came to mind as I was thinking about writing these up, I I don't know Kevin or Theo, if you have a reaction to that, to that back and forth as well.
I think I've. I think the Nahant Street subdivision has been the only subdivision that I've seen since being on the board, so I don't know that I have. The historical context or knowledge. To say one way or the other, if it seems like it would be helpful, I mean, what what Matt's saying. Makes sense that that it would change so often that it it could just be something that we're constantly updating if we tried to do it.
Yeah, oh, I, um. Yeah, so I've only been through just a couple, I I would say at a minimum, um, maybe as part of onboarding. Um, it would be good to just be able to review uh, a couple of past decisions just to, cause right, I I think we're talking about. Having a frame of reference uh, when when we're approaching some of these, so um. Think that that would be helpful, um.
And and Theo, to your point, that maybe that's the answer, is when someone comes on board, maybe just having a handful of them that are instructive that we can just have as a word document. So people can use as reference. You know what I mean? So it's, you know, to to Matt's point, there's not a ton of these, but you do get kind of more or less understand them a little bit better as you see them go through.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think the onboarding, that would be a good addition to that.
Okay. Okay, um. So, uh, anything else in terms of in terms of the uh, item number five subdivision template before I I move on, I think what I'm hearing is that there's a consensus that it's not worth the effort.
Yeah, I think I think we've got a a good middle ground.
Okay, in that case, I'll move on to item number six, items not anticipated by the chair. Um, before anyone starts, I'll I'll take the first one, uh, just to give everyone update as it relates to the. Open meeting law violation of the planning board, uh, following on from our meeting last, last time. Uh, all the members, to my knowledge of the planning board have provided. Uh, all the emails associated with three A that are referenced in the complaint. And those have been posted via the meeting mi- the preliminary meeting minutes for this meeting. That will be uh amended after this meeting in order to uh ensure compliance with the open meeting. Uh, decision from the Attorney General's Office, so anyone who is interested in reviewing all of the emails associated with the planning board. For the alternative minimum map that was developed. Uh, prior to the spring twenty twenty four town meeting can go on to the. Planning Board's website and access the meeting minutes from the September tenth twenty twenty four meeting. With that being said, I'll open it up to other members of the board for any other items not anticipated by the chair.
I have uh, just one issue or one thing to bring up, um. With the Housing Trust, um, we. Did vote to approve a rental assistant deposit program. Um, using ARPA funds, and I know Sam is is working on, still working on that, but. This is gonna allow um. Grants from the town to certain individuals um, that meet. Eligibility requirements, um, for them to receive some funds for uh, moving assistance. For rental deposit money for. Um. Deposits for the light department, so I I think this is gonna be a a good use of of some funds. To help some some people that. If they wanna move in town to to really help them get a good start, um. Maybe Sam can elaborate a little bit more, but um, I think this is a good, good start uh, from the Housing Trust and uh. I'm pretty excited that uh, this is gonna be available in town. I'm pretty excited that uh this is gonna be available in town.
And just as an F I I, the eligibility. Excuse me, requirements um are that you live in or are moving to Wakefield, whatever, so whatever the rental unit is, is in Wakefield. I'm not sure eighty percent AMI uh or below. And um they're currently doing uh one-time grant of five thousand dollars. Um, to an individual for rental deposit, a utility deposit, um and or moving expenses. And it's paid directly to the landlord or the utility company or the moving company.
Is there an application process that someone would like apply for those grants then?
Yeah, there's a whole, it's, I think it's four or five pages. Um, has a whole like checklist that they can go through um of different materials that are needed, and the individual units will have to be. Uh, I inspected for a housing standards quality. Inspection um to make sure that they are addressing any lead issues, that they're safe, that they have running water, you know, they don't have exposed electrical, that kind of. Um, there's a whole checklist that um HUD has for the H Q S, H S Q um. That we'll have to go through, and I think that the Board of Health is gonna be helping us with those inspections, uh we're still trying to nail down exactly. Who's helping with what, uh because there's a lot of different components, um. The Housing Trust also approved uh the. Initial fee to join the Metro North Regional Housing Services Office, so once we get and we're, I think it. I think the next timeline or whatever to actually actively join is um around December, January, um. And it's when the the contract starts, uh I have to confirm the actual date, but the. That group would help us with our affordable housing thing, so not just the units, um but also this uh pro- hopefully helping to manage this program, um. Which I anticipate will, uh with being able to to get the word out for all the different lotteries as well. Should be fairly active, at least as it starts.
Yeah, and yeah, like Sam said, it's it's a. It's a pretty long form you need to fill out, and it also needs to be basically approved by the Chair of the Housing Trust, so there are some safeguards there. Um, a lot of questions came up about making sure that different individuals in one family did not apply and. Sit money, you know, multiples amount of money went to the same people, so there's, I believe there's there's enough safeguards in there where. It won't be abused and it will go to the people that actually need it.
That, that's pretty exciting, um and it seems like that dovetails very nicely with like the lotteries and uh. Yeah, um and I'm I'm glad you've got uh this other group to to help administer it, because right, calculating income can be. Uh tedious, um and uh and and some of that, so that's, that's terrific, well, well done that, well done, Sam.
Yeah, I I'd echo what everyone else says, that's very exciting and and I'm really glad to hear that that some good, some tangible good has is coming out of that. That Housing Trust.
Yeah, I but also believe uh it goes into effect something like October first, I have to. Work on getting, I'm frantically working on trying to get everything together um and trying to be able to get it up on the website. Um, and coordinating with the Wakefield Housing Authority for anybody that um could be eligible through that and then starting to reach out to the different. Developers and property management companies um that'll be dealing with the different lotteries as well.
Okay, uh, any, anyone else have an item not anticipated by the chair?
I had one question that Sam, you might be able to answer, I I saw the forty A Subcommittee has a meeting on Thursday, that's a. Public forum, not a public hearing, is there a specific map? Or series of maps that they're sharing to get feedback on?
Yes, uh, there are, right now, the maps that they're going to be presenting, or I guess I'm gonna be presenting on their behalf. Is a compilation of five different sub-districts around. The Wakefield Station. The Greenwood Station, and then a off-site location off Audubon, where I think it's Colonial Point. Is um the high-rise building, apartment building that's up there, um, the dark, dark brick one that's right by the water there, um. That's the, the, like I said, the offsite, so those are the areas uh that they're looking at in this iteration. And then kind of going over what existing density is, what the proposed density is. Uh, under MBTA community, or what the maximum density, I guess, under MBTA communities could be, um. And then, I think if there's anything else, the stories, uh which reflects kind of the density. Of what they're looking at doing on those sites, um, and that's what they're going to be talking about on Thursday.
So the the public hearing that we would hold this planning board will end up after. The map and bylaw around the town warrant.
Yeah, I don't, um, doing the best I can to try to get everybody's. You know, all the the checks and balances and stuff, um, the goal is to get it ready for town meeting. Uh, it still has things needs to go through and I, you know, they're they're only able to meet when they're able to meet, um. Doing the best I can to to keep progressing forward, and I do think that the maps we have are a good reflection of what's been requested. Um, the bylaw is a reflection of of what was requested from. Um, the survey and the public, the previous public forum and the feedback that they've gotten about um. The MBTA communities, uh but really, it's, you know, it's anybody's guess what's gonna happen. Um, I will do my best as soon as I hear something to make sure that it's on your agenda on the timeline, I just. Unfortunately, like, don't really have a ton of answers because um. The goal is to to be on Fall Town Meeting, but I don't know. I don't know if it's gonna be done, just trying to be realistic. I I am working very hard on getting the bylaw, I met with our consultant today, um went over all of the parameters. Um, kind of pulling from our existing code and then tying in what was previously discussed. And what would be like best practices, like for our commercial, neighborhood, commercial character area like North Ave, um. You know, you don't want to have a twenty-foot setback, um, you want to try to match historic development, so we kind of went over our, all of the different. Character areas and how that would be, how that would actually play out under um the the zoning regulations, and so. I think we have most of that laid out, um, it really comes down to. Just trying to get it all together and making sure that the Subcommittee is voting to move something forward.
Yeah, yeah. Sam, is the, is the Subcommittee intending on having the public forum and then proceeding to a vote? To adopt it, or are they intending to potentially continue to amend?
The hope is to uh have the public forum, get some feedback and then. Adopt or put forward that iteration, um but. Again, I don't, I don't know what the public's gonna say, I don't know what the Subcommittee is going to say, um. You know, we're, we're doing the the best we can to try to help, I mean, I'm doing the best I can to try to help them stay moving forward, um. But there's, it's it's just a very, very tight turnaround.
Yeah, thank you for the work that you're putting into it, I appreciate that, and I know it's a a tough situation. Um, I did want to bring up to the planning board the idea of making a request to the town administrator. Or a, basically a financial impact analysis. If we don't pass something by the end of the year, whether that's at Fall Town Meeting or a special. Meeting that has to be held so we can be compliant, um, reason being, I think we've all seen a lot of. I guess, what I would call fuzzy math, that's being cast around in terms of. This won't be that that bad if we don't meet it, uh in terms of both grants we would lose and repercussions of a lawsuit filed by the A G against the town. Um, so I would be interested to see if the town administrator could go a little bit further than. Mentioning the grants we've received in the past to get at a little bit more solid estimate. In particular, what I would like to see is the financial impact of a lower bond rating. Uh, I have heard that our bond agency asked in the last interview process. If we're compliant with forty A, and at that point, we could say yes, because. Technically, everyone is, because we haven't passed the deadline, um, I think it would be helpful for us to have as a planning board in. Being the people who are who are ultimately the ones bringing this forward at town meeting or a. Special town meeting, to have something to work with there, so that we can kind of rebut the claims that are out there. Um, as well as the 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 costs from um. Counselor Mullen of of what it would look like to combat a lawsuit and the likelihood of actually winning that. That's not to say. The costs are not, or it could come back that the costs are low, and if the costs are low, that then. The uh the assumptions made by a lot of people could be wrong, but I I think it would be helpful to have a little bit more uh. Precise estimate, I know it won't be exactly precise, but something more than than the grants that we've received in the past that we would not be eligible for now. So.
The, as a side note, um, the. The the state hasn't. Set out a final list of what grants will be impacted, um, we do know that with MassWorks, it's. Going to give priority, so if you're compliant, you get, you know, extra points towards your ranking. And on your grant application, and if you're not compliant, you're gonna get pushed down, um. Based off of the number of compliant municipalities at this point, it has the potential to effectively block out people. Um, we don't know for certain that that's going to happen, but we do know that they are prioritizing MBTA communities, um, so that is gonna. There are maybe grants that are not explicitly part of their list, but are still ending up getting impact, um, and as a side note, Milton agreed on a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar flat fee. You can't use your standard town council, you have to hire outside council for this, um, so, just so you know.
That's good to know also. So, I wanted to bring that up to to see thoughts from from the rest of the planning board, if that's something that. The rest of you think would be a good idea, something we can do in the meantime to try to. Help with eventual conversation that will happen.
I would be supportive of us sending something as a board to uh to Counselor Mayo. Related to request for that financial information to help guide the conversation.
Yeah, um, uh, thank you, Kevin, I thi- I think that that's, that's a really important suggestion, and.
Yeah, I I think that would be good, I, I I think the, the report should be also presented. By the town manager too, I, I think it would hold a little bit more weight than if it just came from the planning board, um. So basically, we just request that that the. That the town manager. Accurately and realistically look at the effects of not doing this. And and give a report on that, um, I think it would hold more weight if it came from. From them than this board, considering how uh things have gone in the past.
And I think also, unless, I I think there's strong consensus there, I I also do think that we should consider if we're gonna write something to. Steve, I don't know if he's the right person, but I I think that we should specifically state our position that. Regardless of what the town does at town meeting, I think it would be a dereliction of duty. If the subgroup was not able to get something presentable at town meeting. I think that that would be a terrible outcome for the town, and would represent a complete failure of that group to perform their basic functions. Um, we we may have disagreements as a community of whether or not we should comply with this, but I think that it would be. A really um disrespectful outcome to not give the town the option of compliance.
Can we agree with that?
Would um, the. The Financial Commission, the the Finance Committee, should they be doing this report? Or maybe in conjunction with the town manager?
Possibly, I I wasn't sure if it would be Steve Mayo Finance Committee. Probably not.
I would advocate that we just send something to Steve and let him manage it as he sees fit.
Um, do you all want me to draft something to send out for you to review?
I I wait, if unless other people disagree, what I would propose is, Kevin, if you want to draft something and issue it to the. To the other members of the board, and then we can review as a group at the uh at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm, I'm also comfortable if, um, if Kevin wants to draft it and. Jim, you're comfortable with it, that we sign it, and just because time is of the essence, um, I would be okay with sort of moving forward. So, and then report, and then, and then we could report back at the next, at the next meeting, if that, if that was okay. So, I'll I'll go either way, whatever, whatever folks feel is uh a better process.
I I. I think we have time, obviously, this would need to be done before. Town meeting, so I don't know if it needs to get out before our next meeting. So, I I'd be more comfortable being able to review it as as an entire board, if it's gonna come from the board that we all. Put some eyes on it and have a, an opportunity to comment on it.
I agree, especially given the the long and winding nature of the history associated with this topic. Okay, so Kevin, if you, if you want to push something to the balance of the board, we'll view, I'll put it on the the agenda for the next meeting, and then we can go from there.
It works.
Does anyone else have any other items not anticipated by the chair? Seeing none, uh, would anyone like to uh to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, he's motioned to adjourn by Matt, he's seconded by Theo, uh, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And yes to myself, thank you everyone for the meeting, have a good night.